Oh my goodness.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Let's kick off the budget work session. I was hoping to have some cool music, but no. Nothing prepared for you. All right, I'm going to jump right in. Start off with the objective of our budget process in general, and obviously, our first objective is to always be accountable stewards to our residents and our taxpayers. That's kind of our whole job here is to program the money. The way that it should be programmed. So we want to provide excellent service to the community. And we want to plan for the present and future through capital improvement planning in our water wastewater streets, park and rec technology and city facilities. And how do we do all of those things? We retain and attract our top talent, make sure that we have the right people in the right places. So that's the overarching objective of the budget. All right. So for our agenda tonight, we're going to go over revenue and expenditure projections for 24 and for 23. We're going to go over the council budget priorities and we'll go over council and staff identified priorities. We'll also go over inflation projections and interest. Look at the mill levy. We're going to do a few different things tonight. Okay.
Yes, I just wondered if we would get hard copies of this.
Oh, I didn't print them out. Do we? Do we want hard copies now? I can send it to you after if that's okay.
That's good.
Okay. Is what you want to print out?
Yeah, I'm I'm old school. I want to smell the ink. I do, I love especially the garlic, but a little, little mimeograph machine ink is good, too.
Okay, I sent it to you, Amy. Thank you very much.
But please proceed.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Wow.
No problem. I apologize. I'll remember that for next time.
It's in the budget.
You know, we negotiate the best rates on all of our. All right, here we go. Okay, so I'll start off with our revenue projections and where we're at year to date. So this is our 3% sales tax. This is the newest information available as of the beginning of September here. So we went over this, I think, at our last council meeting, how we were looking through July. So now we have the August numbers. And they're continuing on that same trend. So if you look at the dark greenish blackish line, we're just slightly above where we were last year and last year was just slightly above where we were the year before. So it's a very consistent staggering here. If you look at year over year, how we're looking for January through July so far. July has been our biggest month, which was higher over last year than we've had every other month. But so it's it's continuing in that trend, which is good to see that we're consistently above where we were last year.
Aaron, on August on that one, it looks like it spiked a lot last year. What's, did you say you had August numbers for this year?
So if in 21, I don't have August. So we're in we're in a rear. So the July number is actually what we received in August.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. In 21 in August, we had a giant refund for Walmart, and so it very much skewed our numbers. Which is why it looked so much higher.
Okay, thanks.
All right, and then lodging revenue is a little more erratic. I won't say erratic, but it's a little less consistent than what our sales tax numbers have been. We're up one month, we're down a little bit the next, we're up again, we're down again, we're up again. July's numbers that we received in August were the biggest increase that we had also over last year. So I don't know if that's going to continue. I don't know if next month is going to be down a little bit again or not. It's really kind of been all over the place. But so we are up year to date, but it's it's not as a consistent as the sales tax. So here's how we're looking year to date so far. July, year over year, we're up 4.5% when we look at year to date, we're up 203,000 over last year. The budget projection was 3%. So we are up 1.5% over the budget projection. Hopefully, that will continue. It's been pretty consistent. So I think it's safe to assume it'll be pretty close to that. And then in the month of July, which we received in August was 5% up. And then lodging tax, year to date, we're up 9.6%, which is 22,000 over last year, and we did a flat projection on that one. So it's 9%, 9.6% over budget as well. And then this past month, we were 23.3% up.
Aaron, is there any way to determine why the spike? Do you attribute it to an event or a new lodging facility coming online?
I just think it was a busy month. Probably I would attribute it to good weather, probably.
Aaron, don't we also have a year now for microtone? Do we have a full year?
We have over a full year, yes.
We over a full year. So could these numbers also be reflecting the increase for not the microtone?
I'm not going to speculate. I don't know for sure, but it, as we've looked at it, it's been it's continued with that split of about 60% STR versus 40% lodging. So I would attribute a little bit more of the increase to STR than to lodging. But I can't say for certain which. All right, so 2023, how do I'm looking now at how I think our year-end projections are going to look. And they do look quite different than what our adopted budget was. So for revenues, 2023, we had originally budgeted 14,400,000, 14,400,000, I think. Goodness, not 14,000, 14,400,000 for our revenues. I'm projecting now it's going to end at 14,650,000 approximately. This is made up primarily of two items. One, we received $430,000 more from the DDA because they paid off their loan early. And then the second item is we had a reduction of about 150,000 because we were not able to fill that economic development function. So we had originally projected a transfer from lodging fund into the general fund. I'm assuming that we're not going to have that transfer now since we're already in September. And then expenditures, we originally budgeted 14,397. My year-end projection is my year-end projection is 13,700,000, which is about 700,000 less. 150 of that is not receiving, not paying out the money for the economic development function. And then the rest of it is unfortunately vacancies in all of our different staff, especially in our field crews and police. That's where the majority of that comes from. And then also, we're still seeing some supply chain issues. So there were a couple of vehicles we were not able to purchase for public works. So that that's what makes up the majority of that that funding. So we were originally supposed to have $10,000 revenue over expenditure, and I'm projecting about 943,000. So it's obviously not how we want it to look. We want it to be a much, much less. But it is we'll be able to program it next year into some of our capital needs and that kind of thing. Any questions on this?
No, I remember correctly, last year was about 42% vacancy. Something like that, if I remember correctly. So what's our unfilled vacancy so far for this year?
I don't have that number prepared at this moment, but I will say that we in the past six weeks, we are in a much better shape than we were the previous three months. So I think if we looked at the vacancy for the entire year, it would look a lot worse than it does currently.
Okay.
If that.
Thanks.
And Aaron, this is all general fund. These are not the.
This is all general fund. We will have all the other fund information when we do the actual, we did the full budget. You know, I mean, we know the streets fund, we, there were several projects that we didn't do this year. So you're going to see a bigger fund balance in the streets, but we'll have that programmed into next year. Most of the projects are just rolling over. All right, so inflation, inflation has been a really hot topic this year for the Fed, for the market. Just in general. So and I know last year inflation was just completely out of control. So when we look year over year, July 2023 versus 22, it's 4.7% up. But when we look at June and July themselves, it's dropped down to 1.3%. So obviously, all those interest rate increases that the Fed's been doing, it's it's starting to show up now, and we're starting to see it definitely slow down quite a bit. The inflation growth index that most of the major, if you look at what the Fed, you look at Colorado, you look at what some of the bigger entities are projecting. And it looks like by the end of 2024, we're expecting it to fall to 2.6% and be more stabilized. Again, if you, I prepared this last week. If you look in the last couple of days, there's been some disagreements about that, what would inflation actually is looking like, and if it's actually going to be at 2.6% or if it's going to be closer to three and a half, and then the following year, it'll fall to that. So I, this may be updated by the time I do the the final budget, but this is where I'm at right now with this. Energy index, when we look year over year, it's 8.2% up. When you look at June and July, I'm sorry, I said the backwards. The energy index in June and July of this year, it's up 8.2%. But when you look July over year over year, it's actually down six and a half. So energy, we had originally predicted that it was going to fall. And it was going to stay at a lower rate, and we're starting to see it go back up a little bit. So that that's a big one for the city. I know a lot of our budget projections, when we looked at natural gas, that was a big one for us this year. If we were over in any category, it was that one. So we're going to continue to keep an eye on that and make sure we get a close projection for that. It does. It's it's not just the city. This is the, this is the CPIU for Denver, Lakewood and Aurora. But so yeah, it's it's a little bit unpredictable. It's been up and then now it's down. So we're not exactly sure right now. And then just some other pieces, social security, their COLA, they're expecting is between 2.7 and 3.2% for 24. And then the tax brackets, which were actually predicted from last year, are going to be 7% up in 2024. So those are just the general inflation market data. And you can see the graph. That's kind of how we saw the huge increase from 21 into 22, and then we're starting to see it go down. If you look over into March, May, July, it's starting to go down quite a bit. Okay, and then interest projection. So currently, the federal funds rate is between 5.25 and 5.5. We have most of our money invested in Colorado Trust and Sea Safe, and they use the upper end of the the federal funds rate. So the city currently is earning about 5.46% on our invested funds. And the Fed, they're talking about possibly doing another quarter interest rate two weeks from now. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. I know the stock market has been going crazy because they're saying they're going to raise rates again, and that's just been wonderful. So yeah, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that as well. Oh. Oh, goodness. Well, sorry, sorry about that. That would explain it. Should I hold on a minute or they? No, okay. Okay. That's right. Okay, so for the 2024 budget assumptions, right now I have sales tax continuing to increase at 3%. I don't see any reason to change that. It seems to be pretty, pretty consistent. Inflation right now, I have it at 2.6%. If something changes in the next 30 days, up or down, I'll adjust it accordingly. But that's where I have it today. And then the other big item for the city is the property tax. We received the 2023 certification of values. The city on average was a 30% increase in our assessed valuation. But we do need to remember that we do have Senate Bill 23303 out there, which is going to be a November ballot issue. That is increasing the exemption rate for individuals up to 50,000. It's also a very small change to the assessed rate. From what it is today, I think it changes it by point 05 for personal, and it changes it for point 05 also for lodging. So something to consider because these, these numbers may change. I did speak with the assessors office. September 15th, we will be receiving an impact analysis so that we know how much it could affect the the preliminary evaluation that we already received. So I'll have to give you an update on that once I receive it because it could change the numbers I'm about to show you. They don't expect them to change too much, but it could be, you know, 100,000 or so. All right, and I'll wait, oh, wait a second, let's zoom in. Good question. So I'm on page 11.
I was just guessing how many slides. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Rule in there in color, too.
Wait, is it that paper that Frank had, though, or is it? The good stuff. Is everybody there? Okay, excellent. Okay, so mill levy comparison. So the 2023 budget, our total taxable assessed valuation was 130,853,000. Our mill levy is 15.75, and so that equates to a property tax revenue of approximately 2,600,000. The new valuation that we received, our preliminary valuation is 173,573,000. Assuming that the mill levy was the same, that would be a property tax revenue of 2,733,000. That is 672,000 difference. Okay, so if we go to the next page, this is a table for your reference to see if you were to make a temporary mill levy reduction, how that would affect the city in terms of how much revenue it would cost for each half of a mill. So it's approximately 87,000 for each half mill in terms of how much revenue the city would collect. Is there any questions on this? Would we like to see anything different prepared for your reference?
Temporary mill levy reductions can be reinstated.
That's correct, because of the, because of what the state has put in place, yes. They would not have to go back to the voters to remove the temporary mill. You just can't go above where they were. So. Correct, absolutely. So you, yeah, so it would have to be redone every year.
So you've only gone as far as 12.75 or 3% mill levy reduction.
Correct. The three mills, it's not, yeah, it's three mills, not percentage.
Right, so you, if I see it's not the, it doesn't reflect the 672,000 number. So have you factored in for their, the 3% in rise in sale tax? And have you factored in inflation? If we're, I'm not saying do a zero budget, but if you look at where we're at, why have you not given us the option to?
Oh, because generally, when we do the budget, I look at non-assessment rate years, I expect a 3% increase. That's my projection, and I expect a 6% increase in the assessment years. That's generally how the budget is created. So I didn't go below that because anything below that would take us below that, that amount. Yeah, okay. I mean, obviously, council can make any decision they'd like. But that's right. If you'd like to see something different, I can continue this on.
Oh, that helps me see why you do it. That's good. Yeah, thanks.
All right. And so I contacted the assessors office to find out what is the median actual value of a home in Woodland Park in the city limits? And that amount is 520,400 dollars. So if we use the actual median home value, the assessed value on that property would be 35,205. And I've taken the exact, the reason it's in this weird order with the weird percentages, I took it exactly how it looks on somebody's tax bill. So you can see the city of Woodland Park makes up 19.3% of the total tax bill. And this person, this homeowner with a mill total of 81.271, they would have a total tax of 2,861 dollars. On the next slide, I'm going to show you how it would affect them based on the same calculations I just showed you on the other slide. Okay, so on, on this homeowner, which is the the median, which is the actual middle of the road for our city. If you reduce them a half mill, it's a difference of $17.60 from, from what they would get back. So that's kind of again, if you'd like to see something different, or you want a different kind of calculation, just let me know. But this is what I've put together just so you can see. So how much they would get back if only the city changed it.
Well, that was my follow-up question is, okay, so if the city changes it in this, at a maximum of temporary mill reduction of three of three mill, it's about 100 bucks, 105 bucks. What is it when you look at what the county's proposing as well? In other words, how much of a difference could they see if there's a?
So I did reach out to the county and was not able to get their exact number at this point. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some better ideas to what they're thinking. And they, they may be waiting for that, for that updated impact analysis to make a decision as well, because we don't know how much it could change.
And you said that's coming what, what date?
The 15th.
So Council Eric Stone, one of the commissioners, reached out to me, and I've asked staff to see when a date would be that we can bring the taxing jurisdictions together sometime this month at the cultural center to have a collaborative conversation about what a temporary mill level levy reduction would look like if we all participated together. And to have that conversation, because I think the greatest impact, I mean, just my opinion, the greatest impact would come if we all worked together and do something to help the citizens. So that's it. The questions come up, and that's something that we're trying to work on getting together, all of us, except the school district of school course, because they're statutory. And we could have that conversations, get the biggest bang for the buck if we all work together. So know that.
So you're talking fire as well?
If if they like to, I mean, it's their decision, but I think we all need to have a conversation together in order to really affect something for our communities.
All right. So yes, if I think we'll have more information after the 15th to see, I'll send you an updated impact analysis, let you know worst case scenario, how that would look so that we make the best decision. All right, council priorities, these are the priorities that were established last year. We have public safety, staff attraction retention, housing and zoning, transportation utilities, economic development, and a well-managed city budget and finances. I haven't heard any change on these priorities, but if there is one that are multiple that you don't feel that are relevant anymore, but these are the ones that we had in last year's budget that was, I believe, a consensus from council.
We'd spoken about capital improvements and deferred maintenance.
Yes.
Where is that reflected?
The next slide is the new, yes, sorry, I should have. Anyway, this is what it was from last year. If there's not any major change, which I don't expect, we'll move to the next one. So here, here's the list of items that I've heard from council that you're interested in funding or new, new items that you'd like to discuss. So I don't know if you want to go around individually and talk about the different items that you would like to bring up, or if you'd like for me to go through them one by one. All right, so the first item we have is the capital improvement planning. This includes park and rec. I know that we just had the the master plan done, and there were several items in there, including a study of Meadowwood Park. We have pickleball courts. There was a number of items in there, and I believe right now that the hockey rink improvements are being done. So we have some fun stuff going on there, but there's a few items that I'd like to include in next year's budget from based on what I've heard from council. I've heard staff supplies, tools and equipment, making sure that staff has what they need. Okay, financial support for the historical preservation committee. Frank, would you like to talk at all about what you're thinking for that one?
Thank you. No, it's just that the, we have several historical buildings here in the city limits that need actual repair and maintenance and along with the grant money we asked for, it still would be nice to have some sort of budget to be able to, besides doing the cemetery repairs and those type of things. So.
Frank, do you know if those are oh, but the ones you're aware of, are they city-owned or private?
This is just the city cemetery.
No, not the city cemetery, the buildings that you were talking about.
Yes.
They are city-owned.
Yes, absolutely. Only city-owned.
So, Aaron, there is a historical preservation trust
Yes.
that the city was given 150 years ago that the earnings from the investment of those funds are available to the preservation committee for expenses that they agree upon and, and ask the city to budget for.
Yes.
Do you know what the status of those funds are? I haven't looked at them in.
I'll have to send counsel an update on what that is.
That'd be interesting to look at that because maybe, maybe folks don't know that that is something that's there for their use. I know that the principal is is saved into perpetuity, but any earnings that are there could be something. Thank you.
And Aaron, as soon as you're done writing, could you give us an update on the fiber project, please?
Absolutely. So our grant analyst has secured a planning grant for us to move forward on that project. So we have a 50/50 match with that. So I do plan on the 21st to bring supplemental to council with all the supplemental items that we have at this point, and that would be in there so that we can move forward into that next phase. It's, the cost is a little bit less than 50,000, and our planning grant is 25,000 matched with the grant. So that would move us into the next phase.
As long as we're jumping around in this list, on the first one, capital improvement planning, would that include planning for either rehabilitation of this building or a new building?
There, yes, the, the, we would like to put in next year's budget, the engineering specs to have that cost put on. Do you want to say anything on that?
Yes, right now, we've done some RFIs to get pricing for next year's budget to start making a decision of what it would cost to totally redo this entire building and trying to figure out what the best forward is or path forward is if we were to do a whole new building with rent and redo this one, or or how those would all look. And I've got most of the pricing.
And is that from this year's budget line? Are you projecting additional expenses for 2024?
That there aren't really any expenses except for staff time, just putting together the RFIs for this. But there may be any extra additional engineering efforts for some like long-term capital improvement planning for the entire city for energy savings, and some of those projects might be part of the improvements for this building.
And that'll be included in your portion of the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And in the report that I'll bring.
Okay.
But those would be general fund dollars, correct?
Correct.
And while we're still on capital improvements, how about the park? We talked about the, now that the park's paid off, there's some issues that will be good for the long-term improvement of it and maintaining of it. Is that something that you're, you're factoring into capital improvement planning?
Correct, yeah, that's.
So as part of that assessment for the rest of the buildings throughout the city and energy improvements and ways we can save there, some of those big projects, like, for example, turf in the park versus the grass in there are also included in that plan. And then the amounts for the sidewalk and repairs throughout there are also included, would be included in next year's budget as well. So the sidewalk is certainly included. We can make the decision on if we want to move forward on the, the other plan with the engineering and the larger capital project.
Well, there's also all the, the erosion along the banks and the exposed irrigation and just the whole the drainage and the fact that it's actually undermining foundations on the sidewalks and stuff, and even on the little pavilion, or not the pavilion, the roundabout where the flag is, you know?
Yeah, so we can likely, so the, the plan would be to ask for the engineering amount for that particular all those improvements within the pond area for 2024 in to go into construction into 2025 to try to set up for success for being a year ahead and having shovel-ready plans for those projects. So if you'd like to combine those and try to push it all in the same year, we could try to do that. There just might be some challenges with getting all the engineering set up and the construction done at the same time and being competitive in those costs.
Well, while it's fresh in my mind, we've got citizens who said if you can get a set of drawings for the park, they'll look at it for low-hanging fruit in terms of low-cost types of fixes that can give us a maximum bang for the buck while you work on the bigger stuff. So can I put in a request for a set of plans?
Yes, I'd be happy to get those to you. Thanks.
Right. And on, if we get to the next slide, which we may, I'd like to spend most of the time on this one, but the next slide is, is the staff items. And then I was going to talk about a little bit about my thoughts on the capital improvement planning and then general. But yeah. The next item we have is the landscaping and beautification. That's, I've heard that from a few of you, and that's anybody like to add anything on that one?
Please don't plant little tiny soldier sticks anymore.
All right. Routine staffing and staff compensation, that's, I've heard that from several of you. I don't think we need to talk about that one really anymore. The fiber project, as I said, yeah, we will hopefully be moving forward that shortly. And then retooling the signature events fund. And then retooling the signature events fund. I think there's going to be some discussion on this one.
What does that mean?
I know from the last time that we talked about the signature signature events fund, it sounded like we needed to have further discussion on this one to give staff direction on how we would like this rolled out, if we want to continue doing it, if we want to add more to it, et cetera.
Can we have Nina weigh in? Sorry, Nina. Way in on incentivizing businesses with funds where it's not in our charter that we're not able to do it directly through council and budget appropriations versus something like work with the DDA.
So let me look, read the charter part specifically, and this is for grants though for nonprofits, correct?
It's well, not just nonprofits, it's for any business. There's it's at this point, it's not limited.
Nine point one seven of the charter.
Thank you.
Nine point one seven eight.
Nine point oh, nine seven. Thank you.
I don't have to have a media.
Oh, for private benefit. So I would say as long as you're making sure that it's not for private benefit, then you're good. Does that answer your question?
It it does for me. I was gonna ask the same question, Robert, because the previous means that the the city took in assisting different entities with events or just operations in general was through the community investment fund and the requirement was that those that applied for the community investment fund money were nonprofits. The signature event program that started, I guess, last year and fifteen thousand dollars was allotted to the signature event fund did in fact benefit private entities. And that's my question is 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 that did we run afoul of our own charter when we did that?
Well, I read it more clearly. It says residential, commercial or other development. So even though the 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 section says private benefit and then starting to see if there's anything else I'm missing, but if it's not for creation of municipal services to residential, commercial or other development, then we didn't run, we didn't run afoul. So for another words, many of my municipalities actually do this, but they don't have this charter provision. We we give breaks on certain utilities and that sort of thing for developments, want to incentivize it. Your charter prohibits municipal services for residential, commercial or other development.
So what's what's that mean then in terms of events? In your opinion?
It doesn't sound like it relates because not develop private development. Unless I'm missing something that event was specifically to benefit even intangibly a residential commercial development, but it sounds like not. So it's something that didn't violate the charter. It doesn't violate the charter.
If I if I summarize it and somebody else tell me if you, it's different than this, but the idea is that it's for commercial endeavors, whether they're nonprofit or not, who are bringing new business into Woodland Park and therefore increasing our tax revenues. So incentivizing someone to develop some some signature event that bottom line of it by us chipping something into it comes back to us in the form of increased tourism or increased sales tax.
So it says we shouldn't use funds to use funds or resources or wave for the creation of or extension of municipal services to residential, commercial or other development. So I would I would interpret that as development, creation of
Other development.
Of building and that sort of thing. And then municipal services are, like I said, utilities, sewer drainage, streets, because it then subsection B kind of goes into what the benefits are municipal water sewage drainage. So this is again, a lot of cities do this incentivizing. Your voters at one point chose not to.
Three times.
So it looks like it to me, I would interpret this narrowly as as municipal services, which are water, street drainage. That's a, you know, term of art. Municipal services that that's how I'd interpret it and development, meaning when you develop usually buildings or structures or or things like that.
You can.
I would say for the purpose of development. Because the the residential, commercial or other, you know, that if we're using like, you know, forms of construction, because obviously this isn't the clear as it could be because we're asking questions about it, right? But if we're using typical construction of legislation, we look it residential, commercial or other, that means as it to to me that I would interpret that as yeah, development as, you know, buildings, I don't know how else to say that, but residential, commercial, that means it's along the same lines. Not just any business benefiting slightly from it. That's how I interpret it.
So are you saying commercial, you're applying that to a building as opposed to a commercial endeavor?
Commercial development is, I would I would take it residential development, commercial development or other development. So commercial development is yeah, building structures that are not residential. I would think that word commercial goes to commercial real estate or commercial development because of the word if the word development was, if it didn't say or other development, I wouldn't have that interpretation, but.
So the other, does that include non-physical structure?
I'm trying to think if there is development that maybe might be a structure, but it's.
Well, I I look at it from the terms of a private sector entity that wants to bring an event to this to the city to make money for themselves. And and then, oh, by the way, there might be an additional benefit to the city because it brings traffic into the city, brings tax revenue into the city. It's different to me than awarding money, tax dollars to nonprofit entities. It's it's basically awarding money to an entity that's here to make money to the to begin with. And I and I have a problem with that.
I agree. If you'd have the charter, even if you have the charter provision that most, most of, I know most of my city council members in all the cities would agree with you that that's but that's, yeah, that's different than I does it specifically violate the charter is different than what is best practices for your.
I wanted to hear your interpretation of the charter because I have had a couple of folks contact me and say, hey, I think the signature event money that was handed out this year, it violated the the charter and based on your interpretation, I agree with it. It did not, but I do have a problem with paying an organization that's here to make money by using our facilities, by using our services, giving them additional money to trample the grass in the park. So the bottom line for me is that I I would not want to see that set aside again for twenty twenty four.
Well, I would share that, but I would also extend it to nonprofits. I don't, I don't think it's a equally equal playing field to favor a nonprofit over a commercial enterprise. So I would say strike it. I would share that if.
You know, maybe the only two feel that way, but yeah, I agree.
No, I'm I was all for this last year, but listening to citizens have reached out to me and said the same things that they've said to you along with you're picking, you're you're picking an event that I don't like and you're using my taxpayer dollars to pay for it while it's an insignificant amount in the overall budget, they're still, they're not happy with that.
Particularly when we do provide in kind services to many of those events.
Yeah, that's where I that's where I struggle because the in kind service is a lot of money in retrospect. So.
I've always said it's not an appropriate use of taxpayer dollars and I was the one that championed striking it when I was first elected. So.
Yeah, you and Belle, actually. Yeah. So is that enough for us to say that we're not wanting to have this as part of your planning?
I just think every year it comes up as an issue.
It does. It is an issue every year because what will happen is if we do strike it, I don't know, does it sound like it's echoing?
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Um, if we do strike it, we're going to have people at the podium asking, and I think that's what the design of that was. So we didn't have to have them at the podium coming directly to you to ask.
Well, that's the whole point of it. If there's no, if it's not, it's not in our fiduciary responsibility to be taking taxpayer dollars and handing it out to these special interest folks. The bottom line, somebody comes up to the podium, I'm sorry, that's not our function as council to allocate taxpayer dollars to your specific interest project. And I think we almost got there last year. And then the signature event came up on the calendar for this year. And anyway, I think there's enough of us who are saying, maybe we should just strike it.
I just feel like the city does enough with in kind donations with police, with barricades, with art, space, parking block offs, all kinds of things.
Well, and you know, if somebody wants to come to the podium and it's something that we actually think one one off that would benefit the community, we can always say yes. We don't have to. I mean, I don't know that there is anything, but you know, it's not, I'd rather not budget it and make it on a case by case basis if we have to. But we don't have to either. I mean, we can always say no. They can always ask and we can always say no.
How do other cities do the special events? Pueblo does a city fair every year. Who pays for that?
Yeah, it definitely depends on what's in their their code to start with, but I mean, a lot of cities, it's it's in kind. And that's.
That's why we, that's why we continue with ours. No, I just, it's not really an answer. I mean, we see it all the time. I just that that was the reason why we did this last year was because other cities were using that to bring in special events to increase the tax base during those weekends. And that's why I thought that when we talked about it, we were going to make that decision when we saw the tax for that weekend as it rolled in to see if there was an actual increase and to see if this actually does benefit us. I mean, I'm the first person who doesn't want to spend money on something that's not going to benefit us as a citizenry. So I would like to see the figures and see if the money we spent, just pick one, let's pick the motorcycle rally or pick the baton twirlers and see if, you know, they brought in more than the, would we give them two hundred and fifty dollars? So I mean, if that's if that's what we want to do, but I would like to look at that before we just.
Yeah, they probably got tattoos and piercings while they were here.
What?
Only only from two jobs. Anyway, so are you talking about the motorcycle riders? You guys are tough, you baton twirlers. But no, so I, you know, I was hoping we'd be able to see some of that. You know, receipts or the tax base for that weekend to see if if what we championed really paid off for the city.
And it will come.
Well, no, yeah, I know, but I would like, before we make a decision of cutting this loose, you know, which I think is what everybody's talking about right now, I'd like to at least, you know, indulge me or several other of us to see what the tax brought in if it, you know, what did we give them the the weekend for the ride? We did fifteen grand?
That was two thousand.
Two thousand. Yeah, it's five altogether. So I I have no doubt that we brought in one in five thousand in taxes that we can.
And that doesn't include all the in kind.
Right. Well, I understand that. That's why I asked about the other thing about the police.
So the question.
Involvement on these activities, these special requests.
You you bring up a fair question. There was going to be a debriefing of those, each of those events. Parks and Rec, do you have some sort of idea of when those that data is going to come back to you? What you doing a debriefing on each one of those allocations that you guys made?
So they chose the funding for that and that was the only portion of.
Oh, you guys are going to do, there was, we talked about.
City manager Lawson at the time, when he set this up, I don't think he put a mechanism in there for reporting back. And if you read through the whole signature event policy that he created, I don't think there was a mechanism to have them report back. I think only if the next year they reapply for funds, then they would talk about it, but I don't think we have a reporting back mechanism. Do you agree, Erin?
I I do agree.
Yeah.
And the hard, the harder piece of pulling out the specific weekend data is that most of our businesses remit on a monthly basis. I can see August versus August.
Right.
At the motorcycle rally, not three years in a row, right? So it's, I don't know if we're going to be able to pull out the specific data that anyone is looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Driving around the city, it was busy. I don't know if the businesses were busier that weekend or not. I, there's no way for us to really extrapolate that out.
The chamber had any.
I I'd like to make a suggestion, Erin, that we strike it from our budget, but we approach our rep for the DDA and ask the DDA if they are prepared to do something like that out of DDA funds out of some sort of signature event through the DDA, which is a legitimate branch to do this sort of thing.
I don't know. I don't know because they're more on development.
Well, that's the whole point of these signature events was development. We were trying to see that it bump up our sales tax, trying to see it bumped up tourism. So that and.
I could see, I could see a nexus with possibly Main Street, but I I'm not sure that I would see the nexus with DDA personally.
Okay, well.
Robert, I'm going to go back and read the charter to see what the language says, to see if it is broad enough that a signature event would fall under it and may even reach out to Marcus to get his legal interpretation because that's valid question.
It is. It is part of the charter for Main Street for certain that our Main Street organ, you know, our Main Street organization is not active right now.
Yeah, I I just don't think it is with the DDA, but.
I don't either.
And that's a discussion if we want to try to revitalize Main Street in twenty four, if we want to put funding aside for that in particular.
So just in defense, I just want to give a different point of view. And and I understand exactly where all of your coming from. It's not just the investment in these events are not just for stimulating tax revenues. It's an investment in bringing things that are enjoyable to our community for them to attend and enjoy and and have that diversity and things, things to enjoy here besides. Well, most restaurants are closed by seven, so going out to dinner is sometimes a challenge as well, but it it wasn't just hard lined money. It was, it was talked about and Valcar is the one that started the conversation about investing in those things that really bring a draw and really enhance and our signature to our community. There are things that people think of when they think of Woodland Park. And and so just to extrapolate on and get away from just the focus on tax dollars, that was another reason for that conversation. So I just wanted to share that.
I appreciate you sharing that, but on the other hand, all of those events would have occurred anyway. So why would we use taxpayers' dollar dollars to you know, really a drop in the bucket. Those events are going to occur anyway.
Maybe.
And if they're not, then if if two thousand dollars made the difference between having the rally here and not having the rally here, I would argue that it would not.
And I would, I I hear a lot of picking on the rally. They are not for profit. They have a group that are a committee. They have an organizer that they pay to put the event on.
Yeah.
And it's a committee of veterans and the money that they make from that goes back to the veterans and it's invested in different programs and different veterans to help them. So it's not a for profit venture.
But Jim Ware is for profit. There's no doubt about it.
Where is a consultant that is hired by the committee to organize the event for a large amount of money. I don't know. Have you seen their financial statements to know that? A couple of years ago I did ask for them. Yes.
Well, I think in fairness, let's not isolate it to any one particular.
I didn't, I just do that as an example.
And and there is a fair amount of in kind going to that particular organization. So but to Erin, to your point, I think as a separate line item, as a separate conversation, I personally would be in favor of looking at what would take for us to reinstitute some form of Main Street that's fresh, that's new, that really lets the past go and start afresh, if that can put it that way. So but again, on this one, I I say just strike the line item. That'd be my, my, that'd be my preference for now.
Yeah, Robert, I'm gonna chime in. I I second that approach. My Main Street is the appropriate mechanism, in my opinion, for doing something like that. To Frank's point, I I don't want to cast a vote yet without some data. What Frank is asking for is absolutely legitimate. Let's see what the blip was because that may be the justification for the Main Street conversation because if it's not the Main Street working it, I don't think it's city council's job. Because if it's not the Main Street working it, I don't think it's city council's job to be handing out money. It's just we're fiduciary agents for the citizens and um if all citizens don't benefit, you know.
Yeah, I I agree with you and and Frank, the challenge, but uh Suzanne just told us is that Michael didn't put, did not put a mechanism in, so so. Yeah, yeah, sure, understood.
None of us thought about it.
And then um I know that Debbie Miller did want to make a quick comment about the veterans rally and businesses if council wanted to. Entertain that.
Yeah, she could come.
Knowledge is power.
All I wanted to do, Carol, you had asked, and so we reached out to our businesses. I can't tell you about STRs, but I can tell you our lodging, a hundred and sixty rooms were not full. And I can tell you that our businesses geared up before and did things after. Um a lot of the locals will stay home during that event um just because of the traffic, that sort of thing. This is not any kind of statement negatively about the event in any way. It's just the reality of the the anecdotal data that I have.
And on the other side, I've had some great anecdotal data from the, they said the event this year was way better than last year, so. But as you say, it's anecdotal, um yeah. You have to ask the mayor.
Yes.
Could I comment on that very soon?
Sure.
Thank you. My name is John Bartlett. Uh I'm a veteran and I helped with the motorcycle rally and the Purple Heart Trail sign. That we we put together. Uh my world is veteran, is a veteran world. I'm seventy-four years old and I've been a veteran and active duties member in the ar- the armed forces. Our unit, MACD, SOG, sustained the highest rate of casualties in the history of the American Army, eighty percent. That means eight out of ten guys got hurt or killed in the in the event. Why this event is important is during the event and after the event. I went to uh, you know, coffee with the veterans, breakfast with the veterans, friends that are veterans to their homes. Three things happened. My sister-in-law, she's a Woodland Park girl graduated from high school right here, Julie Burgess. First time she ever went to a veteran event, it was so moving to her, especially the memory cer- ceremony. That she's now a volunteer in an auxiliary form with the Veteran Club in Colorado Springs. Uh had several different older veterans, World War II and Korea, come up, talk to me during, and it was about the healing. And it was about the government approval of our city council. They were pleased. It's kind of hard for me to hear good comments about government nowadays, to tell you the truth. So I am glad that, well, I heard those things. Personally, it was the first year for me since nineteen seventy. That I could walk up to the Vietnam Veterans Wall. I am a Vietnam veteran and not wig out. I could usually get within fifty feet of it, and then there was an invisible force and I just couldn't get any closer. I don't know why, but I could this time and I'm going to call it a healing. So what you were saying, Kelly, about. Other things having value, an intrinsic value, the two comments I got the most of. Was the healing that came in multiple generations and also the support they got from city, city council. Did you notice the people holding or the unit holding up the flags in the semicircle around the crowd was relieved by younger veterans? One of them is Woodland Park guy and his girlfriend, they're both both veterans. They stood up and got involved first time we, that I remember seeing young people, young veterans get up and get involved. And I would encourage you to keep this going each year. Thank you.
I I I thank you for your service. I'm also a retiree and a veteran. My husband is a Vietnam-era veteran, a retired Marine. My first husband was a retired Army Special Forces officer. He's no longer with us. So it's not that I was denigrating the rally. I think it's a wonderful event. I'm just questioning using taxpayers' dollars to set aside for any special event and choose winners. Because the rally was not the only event that we um allotted money to. We allotted money to a couple of other events. How do you choose winners and losers and those particular applicants? And that's my point.
Yes, ma'am, and it is valid point too. I admire you for it. Fairness to all the people. Thank you.
Okay, so for the sake of time, do you guys want to keep it on and then see if there's any data we get back? Or is it removing it? And then if we get data back, the potential to re- to put it back on.
My personal recommendation is delete the line.
Delete the line. I support that.
Yeah.
I want to keep the line.
As do I.
I would keep the line until the data is in, but I'm leaning towards, I mean, if the data doesn't convince me to to keep it, then I would delete it.
Well, I.
Well, there will be data for some, I can tell you, there is some coming.
Yeah, I could, I mean, just from the sales tax data, it's going to be, if we were up over last year, I mean, that's that's.
That's all we know, that we can't say specifically which event caused which. I mean, you can sort of look at dates, but it's not that specific. Um I I still, I'm, I agree with deleting the line only in the sense of, I've always said it's. Why is it up to us to pick winners or losers and who we get to support with taxpayer dollars? So, but um the other spectrum, I can understand that when those events do come and the tax dollars do come in. It does in turn support everyone, but I think that the sig- the events are capable of coming without us picking losers and winners.
Agreed, agreed.
So I think there's consensus to delete the line.
Is there consideration to add a funding for Main Street or do we want to discuss that at a later time?
I think for the sake of time right now, depending on where you're at with your presentation, it can come in at a later time.
Okay. Okay, uh we'll we'll talk about it at the next, when we talk about budget.
What did you say?
We'll talk about the next time we talk, have a bu- budget discussion.
What the staff priorities are.
No, Main Street. And I just said for the sake of time, let's do that next time. Because this won't be our only budget meeting, right?
Correct.
Blaze on.
The the last slide is just the staff priorities. Um it's everything that we've been working on and everything that we're hoping to continue to work on. Um I don't think there's going to be anything new or surprising on this slide in terms of what the staff priorities are. It's streets, it's drainage, it's multimodal, it's all that accessibility throughout the city. It's park and rec, downtown beautification and maintenance, it's capital planning and preventative maintenance and everything we're hoping to do with with the parks and the planning we have there. Fiber, we've already talked about comprehensive water. We're hoping to build the reservoir, looking at water acquisition, looking at. Uh doing some different things with some water consultants, so that that's all um staff priority. Uh GIS development is humongous right now. We've been working very diligently on that. Uh Ben and his staff have been. Uh rea- really working on that as well as planning, so that that's a huge one for us um in terms of all the different projects that we can do with that GIS. Data once we get it. Um looking at compensation, I know this was supposed to be the fourth uh step of our compensation plan. So we're going to look at that and see if that's, that's still the direction we're going and then cost of living. Um and then continuing with the aging vehicle and replacements. Uh so that's, that's all that I have.
Erin, just one quick question on the aging vehicles and equipment replacement. I know other, other municipalities uh take the vehicle replacement um. The emotion around it and they do it by doing a kind of a a schedule across the board for all the vehicles.
What we're gonna have. We we will have a five-year plan of every single vehicle that we have in our fleet, what the mileage is and when we expect to replace it across the board. That that's the plan we're going towards.
Thank you.
Did we? Well, we'll have one again. Kyle, our fleet supervisor, has been doing an awesome job. He's put that together for us, so we're gonna figure out how we want it to look, but we've got the data already, so.
Okay, thank you.
So can I share something with the council before we um finish this conversation? It was something I meant to bring up with when we talked about the signature event thing, because it's really relevant is um. Just for your edification, the Symphony Guild Board of Directors in conversation with Craig Harms, the Woodland Park Wind Symphony. After the event on the fifth, the reason that we always had that concert on the fifth was because the Philharmonic Orchestra is who came to play. For, gosh, thirty-plus years, maybe more than that. And they play on, they played on the fourth in Colorado Springs, so they were rehearsed. And then they would play up here on the fifth and we hosted them here first at the high school, then we moved to the middle school. So the Philharmonic is not doing that. They're not doing outdoor concerts anymore at all. And so they stream now. And so we've been using the Wind Symphony for several years now. And had many cancellations for various reasons, but I won't bore you. So we have, we met today. Gail Gross representing the Fourth of July, uh Old Fashioned Fourth of July, Craig representing Wind Symphony and myself representing the Symphony Guild. We're going to move that to the evening of the fourth and make the Fourth of July the Fourth of July. And have it in the park and um after the Old Fashioned is finished, kind of what transition into an evening. With the concert in the park and it will significantly decrease costs. And our fundraising and so we can then partner with the Fourth of July not to. Not to interfere in that, but to enhance that and to enhance the concert. And we'd love to work with the city and and I can, I can't commit, but I think I can. Um tentatively that the Symphony Guild would be able to invest in uh helping the city do fireworks again. So we we're going to start working in that direction as a, as the three different bodies. And make that change and make it more of a community event, similar to what we do on the Christmas day with Breakfast with Santa. The home tour and then the parade culminates with the evening and kind of makes the day of it to kick off the season. So we want to make the fourth the fourth and um stop spending the ridiculous amount of money to do the fifth. And it just doesn't work. So I just wanted to report that to all of you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So these are the dates of what's coming?
Yes. So we will have the budget delivered to you on October thirteenth and then the budget presentation will be on October nineteenth. That's our, that's our next step.
We get it on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Council, anything further?
Only back to Main Street, do we have to put something in that before you bring this to us or are you just going to put a proposed in there? What are we?
I'll put a line in there.
Okay, then this workshop is adjourned. Thanks. Be back at six thirty.